I just saw we're not.
Five hundred we were last, we had sixty-eight more.
It's pretty amazing. The sand goes away and then it comes back. And we're talking like feet.
Lock down.
Oh no, that's traumatizing.
Yep, we can start, okay. We'll call the meeting to order.
Commissioner Burling? Commissioner Mickey?
Here.
Commissioner Ruda?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Brzezinski, I'm sorry.
Here. Okay, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements? I'll say, I would just like to, we have a couple of announcements as a commission that we would just like to, first, we would like to thank Jerry Montemarisi for his service. He, what, his last meeting was technically our last meeting and we didn't realize that at the time, but we really want to make sure that he's acknowledged in our minutes and thanked for his service on the commission. He was, he participated and I think he had the respect of the entire commission during his service and he stepped in at a time where he replaced a commissioner that had resigned, so we really appreciate that he leaned in to take that role with us and we appreciate his time. Similarly, welcome Harry, we have a new commissioner joining us, Harry Ross, today. Maybe it would be nice if you could take a second to introduce yourself in just a minute to everyone, that would be great. And equally important, welcome Ken, we have a new Public Works Director for the City of Carmel, we are so excited that you're here. I think the city is really lucky to have you and we're really looking forward to working with you. I think the one thing I'll just mention now is that we were, the suggestion is to move the Public Works Report off of the consent agenda today so that Ken can have an opportunity to introduce himself and there are some recent relevant topics like the city budget that just got approved for the new fiscal year that would be nice for him to review if everybody's amenable to that.
Absolutely.
Those were, I think, announcements from our side. I don't know, Justin, Tom, did you all have any?
We also wanted to thank Jerry for his service on the commission, he was, you know, joy to have here. And then going forward with the master plan, I kind of want to just now touch base with you and see if you, are you ready to go forward? Because we're, because Nikki's given us the draft and we're, if your part is ready, just give me like a week to review it and then we can start sending out times and getting a grip when everybody's available.
That would be perfect. I have, I don't have edits so much as a strategic matrix, Justin, that you can look at.
Okay.
It was just more sort of guiding principles across the two plans, so I think you can look at that.
And like match them up together, that's perfect. Alright, yeah, so that'll be coming down the pipe because I know that some of the steering committee members have been calling and asking about when things will be ready, so I just wanted to let everybody know that soon and then we'll be, get ready to have that next public meeting. We'll send out dates and see when we can do it. I don't know, it's the twel-, I don't know if we'll get it in June, maybe mid-July when everything calms down from, you know, turnover in the budgets in the new fiscal year.
Okay. I think as long as we can get it by the end of, I know we have the fourth holiday coming up, but as long as we can have it in, by the end of July, I think that that's a, mid-July sounds great.
Okay.
So you actually have a copy in your hands?
We do.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that does it for announcements.
Okay. Okay, public appearances. Under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this body. Hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act, then that speaker will be muted. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern not on the agenda during the public appearances section of the meeting. Each person's comment shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission. Matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting but may be referred to staff for future meetings. Persons are not required to give their names, but it is helpful for speakers to state their names so that they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. And with that, do we have anybody that would like to make a public appearance today? Okay. Welcome, Melanie.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the new commissioner and to our Public Works Director, this is wonderful, we're all very much looking forward to working with you. So I don't take any more time up. A couple of things for Justin and Tom. On the corner of Fraser Way and Comino Real on the northeast corner, it's posted for a large oak to come down and the oak looks perfectly fine, it's right next to an enormous hole in, open space left by the removal of a really major pine tree. And I was, I go by there all the time because it's very close to my house and I just saw yesterday the posting of that oak tree and I just can't understand what the problem is, there are no lines, there's no nothing, so Justin, could you or Tom check on it and see what the heck's going on? Because we don't, really don't want to lose that tree. That tree, all of you, is on the public right-of-way in front of a very important house, John Steinbeck's sister's home is there. And so it's an extremely important location. The other thing is the third house southwest of, on Comino Real of 13th, there were two, three, excuse me, three, I mean huge cypress, huge cypress that were removed from that property to build this house, this new home. And there was a great deal of contention about that with the city, about the removal. So anyway, the trees are gone, the house is just being completed and ready for occupation. And where are the trees? Where are the trees that are supposed to be on that property? And I don't mean, you know, if we remove pine trees, I don't want to walk there, which is right around the corner from me, and see some olive trees planted there. I mean, we need to-
Can you say the location again?
Yeah, Sarah. It's the third house, excuse me, yeah, the third house on the west side of the street, southwest of 13th on Comino Real. And I don't know if you're going to remember it because you've been around a long time, but there were three really monstrous, I mean, really, I mean, bigger than some of the trees down on scenic, three huge ones there. And so I'd really like the staff and whomever's going to look at tree placement there, virtually no trees on that property and something needs to be done. And those were on public property, not private property, the trees that were removed. And can I have one more second?
One.
One, okay. Please do not try to rush this, you know, the report that's coming out. People are just saturated with all the stuff that's going on in this town and people are starting to really complain, I don't know, I guess Jason, you've gotten some complaints, but people are really complaining around town about all of the stuff and all of the meetings and all the yada yada, they're not happy about it. So I would just encourage you to make it as late as you possibly can so everyone can digest what's going on. And that was probably two or three seconds, thank you.
Thank you. And Melanie, we're not technically supposed to respond, but I will say, Justin, we do have, we did talk about it at the last meeting-
Yeah, I know, because I asked for it.
-and we will be scheduled in the July agenda.
Yeah.
We are going to be reviewing all the tree finds that presently exist and the cost of like dead tree removal, we're going to be reviewing some of those so that for people who aren't necessarily following the rules or following the plans that have been approved by the city, that they'll hopefully end up with some larger penalties for those kinds of things, but that will be on the-
I know, because I spoke to that, I spoke to-
That'll be on the July agenda.
Yeah, so I thank you all very much because I heard you as well as you heard me and others talk about how it's just ridiculous what's going on. Because there are people, I mean, actually near me, just feet from me, a person cut down a huge pine tree, cost him forty-six thousand dollars for that privilege and then it was slightly reduced, that cost. And what he did is just waved his checkbook at all of us and say, "Well, I got my way, I got the tree removed, that's what I wanted." So that's the kind of people we're dealing with. So it, not everyone can afford forty-six thousand or whatever it ended up being, but we'll make the point, so thank you very much for that, really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, which we will just include the meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have on, I'm sorry, Yvette, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you, okay. Sorry, yeah, that's good. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda, we will only have the approval of the minutes from our May meeting on there if anybody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruda?
Yes.
Chair Brzezinski?
Yes.
Thank you, this motion is passed.
Okay, and then we'll be moving the Public Works Director's Report onto the Orders of Business. Perhaps we could take that as our first item, Ken, and that would allow you the opportunity to introduce yourself to everybody, which would be great, so let's pass it to Ken.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. So, thank you first for the warm welcome, the whole town has been very well, warm and welcoming and I really appreciate that. I have a great group of folks, I spent this last four weeks now assessing, looking, listening, and starting to develop, you know, my vision of where I want to take Public Works, we're, you know, improving services, we've got a good group of folks, we're a small Public Works Department and they do a lot of work and it's hard, as you mentioned, there's a lot to be done and it's hard to keep up, but we try, we're doing our best and trying to be very strategic. A little bit about my background, I spent most of my tenure on Mendocino National Forest, a million acres, I managed the natural resources, restoration, conservation, stewardship of that land. I also worked for, helped start up the Bureau of Urban Forestry for the city and county of San Francisco, they didn't have a urban forestry, they had a small group of folks that were under Public Works, but I helped establish a bureau and even got them additional funding with, through the city, an additional eighteen million for our annual budget just to do some tree work and pruning, on top of the thirty-four million we were, we were put together. I went to Army Corps of Engineers, I did, I was their Chief Resources Officer, worked on a lot of their resources, I was there to help the commander, it was a friend of mine, asked me to come on for a year to do some work and after the year, I went and took, I spent the last part of my tenure working as Assistant General Manager for East Bay Regional Park District, a hundred twenty-six thousand acres, seventy-three parks, two counties, fifty-five miles of shoreline, you name it, everything's included, trails, thirteen hundred miles of trails and a great, great organization, I really enjoyed what I was doing there, but the challenge was, is wife and I bought a place in Monterey and we were staying down here more and I started doing commute to Oakland, the office, and that kind of gets old after a while, so I just say, "You know what, I'm just going to pull up and this opportunity opened up and I put my name in and lo and behold, here I am." I definitely have a strong interest in the natural landscape, I definitely have an interest on green and blue, you know, keep the waters blue and keep the trees healthy and the plants and vegetation and the beauty, but also about the health and safety of not only the public, but, you know, the employees that are out there working. So these are like my forefront as I look at how I want to lay out a plan going forward, but right now, we do have a few positions open at Public Works and we've already advertised one of them for the maintenance worker, that will be under you, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, forestry maintenance worker.
And then I'm also looking for a project manager position going forward, because we have one project manager doing, if you've seen the budgets or watched the last Budget Council Meeting, you know, thirty, almost forty, if you include the carryover, forty projects and one project manager to try to carry that forward, that's just, that's just hard to do. So we'll be working on that, filling that position so we can help manage that, but also how do we be strategic? And the team and I and I mean all, my staff are working on, how are we going to accomplish that, at that apple, over the year? How to be, how to map out, when are we going to start things, but also how do we be transparent? You know, how do I, I want to build a dashboard of the future so public can see it, internal folks can see it, and it gets information out of what projects going on where and some of the work that we're doing. As I mentioned, the council approved the budget, thirty-nine and some change million dollars a year, roughly about eight million is capital improvements. Oh, thank you. I didn't even know that was, I'm reading up here, just look up there. And specific for the forest and beach and I might, hopefully I grabbed all of them, but those were the lists of some of the capital projects and this doesn't include all the operational work we do, you know, that we have going on out there, but these are like these capital projects and, you know, forest plan implementation, continuing with that, Justin and Tom are doing a great work on really trying to hone in the stumps, the prunings, the removals, and we're even starting to talk about plantings, I think that came up, planting, how do we look at planting going forward? What do we, you know, we don't have a big budget for planting, but what can we do? What can we leverage out there that can help move that forward? Lot of the, as we were just at our tour doing the beach stairs walk, and for those who are either watching or in the audience here that weren't down there, we're looking at doing the Eighth Avenue stairs in July to replace in-kind those steps so we can get the public access on the Eighth Avenue and I'll be looking at all the other stairs and see what I can do now, but there's also the long-term study and design of the future given the difference, the changes in the climate and weather patterns. Also the sand ramp on the Eighth Avenue, I'm looking at that because I look at that as a priority because of emergency, emergency access for, especially as we get more public out there or people walking more and more as it gets nicer, I want to make sure we have access to get out there for health and safety for, and protection of our citizens. And the scenic pathway enhancements, I know this was Mayor Burns' line item, but he has some, you know, ideas to just keep maintaining, you know, public uses that a lot and we definitely want to make sure it's safe, beautiful, and maintained, so we have some budget for that. Let me see if I have any, I mean, I can talk about each one of these programs. A few weeks ago, Mary, myself, Val, Councilmember Barron, and Chip went to Asilomar, there was a NASA briefing about, you know, sea level rise and, okay, I walk into this room and I'm sitting in the back and they all had their laptops and they got all these mathematical formulas and all this stuff, so they get into the details and the mathematical, but it was quite interesting listening to what they, you know, things are changing in prediction, you know, some of the studies we've had done around the beach areas maybe ten years ago are probably become stale because things have changed and new, new data is out there, new tools to map and measure our sea level rise and the impacts on the sea are out there and studies are getting really more detailed, so it was very informative and I thought it was, it was great. Councilmember Barron did a great presentation, really had the audience honed in to what we do here at Carmel, our interests and where we're, what we're looking for in the future and what we need from them going forward. As you know, working with those, the scientists and engineers, the key thing is, is how do you, how do you translate all that information to usable and understandable for the public so we can use that information? I don't know if you'd like me to go through each one of the projects, but one of the things, you guys know on the Fourth Avenue outfall area, you've probably seen that, I was out there with a few engineers, myself, Javier, we're without, we're starting to look at what are some of the options right now? If you look at it really closely, there's a little pressure, I mean, this, there's layers of, it's been done a long time ago, so there's just better ways of doing this. And then how do we do that so that it's safe for the public, but it's not this pipe that's so high up, you know, maybe as it, how do we make it look more of a natural landscape but still do the work it needs to be, needs to do for the city, which is getting the water out from up here down to the ocean? So it was a great walk and discussion and that one is not like, let's get a temporary fix, that one needs a fix, I mean, there's not a patch there, that's something we need to look into and that's, again, another thing we're going to be doing, design and studies this year and make a, make a plan on what we're going to accomplish and how we're going to get there. And I think that's all I have, unless you'd like me to go to each one, but if there's any questions at all, I definitely welcome that.
Are there any questions from anyone on the commission, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
On the scenic pathway enhancements, it talks about signage, what does that look like or how's, who's putting the, how does that?
That is, that is a very good question. What I heard from Mayor Burns is, you know, there's some signs that are just wearing and they just want to make sure it's updated and freshened up for the public to see and understand. I don't know what specific signs those are.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was a whole new sign package coming?
No, 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 it's just refreshment.
We would see that before.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
I have more of a comment, really looking forward to working with you.
Me too.
Getting more project status, you know, at a higher level, really looking forward to that, so I'm glad you commented on getting some kind of dashboard together so we can see what's going on, because there's a lot of stuff.
Right.
You know, and then the other thing I would probably say is, if we can start prioritizing things too, because as you probably know, you never have enough time, resources, or money to do everything.
Exactly.
And then being able to communicate that up to the city council, to the mayor, is going to be really important.
Most definitely.
Right, and giving that level of communication, so welcome, I'm really looking forward to all this.
I'm same here, I'm same here. And I'm here for questions at any time, you guys know where I'm at, I definitely welcome coffee, we can go for coffee and talk or just walk and talk, I definitely welcome that.
I'd like to also welcome you, Ken, and I had the opportunity to meet you last month at the meeting, which was very nice, and I think sort of going off of what Neil just said, getting ahead of a lot of our issues, this past winter, we thankfully had a pretty mild winter. But as you know, in the past years, we've had some, some pretty heavy ones that have affected shore, stairs, trees. Just, we're now in June, trying to sort of get ahead of these things and be ready for them when they hit us in the coming months. That would be, I think, a big focus that this commission has been looking for, you know, for the last-
Outstanding, yeah, I look forward to, I look forward to your advocacy too and your support and help and, you know, we're putting our minds together, I mean, I might know a lot of things, but I also rely on the collective mindset as what's the right thing to do and what can we do going forward, so I look forward to that, thank you.
Thank you.
And while, while we're on the topic of Ken joining us in Public Works, I think we did, did have a conversation about bringing back the discussion around, just commission discussion of forest and beach priorities for both forest and beach and doing that in our July or August, we'll get, we'll get it here in the next two months to be able to have just an open discussion across the commission. The idea is not that we're setting the priorities, but rather just consensus of commissioners relative to things that we could, so that we could share it with council, just for alignment purposes, right? So it's not, this is not any rogue discussion, this is really just where do we see the priorities? And I think we have, there's, across both forest and beach, absolutely. And that's why I think today, like for example, the Tenth Street stairs was a perfect site visit, it's great to see the like-for-like mindset about just getting a temporary fix so that they can be open for the summer.
Yes.
And I think if the, I think you said it would be July, maybe in July sometime, even if, even if it's possible to put just a laminated sign on the plywood or something that says-
Coming, coming soon.
Coming soon, or the city has, you know, this is a priority for the city, we'll have these, we intend to have these completed by the end of July or something, or just when you expect, maybe not put a specific date, but just that way, it's in the spirit of letting people know that it's coming, I think is, would be great. We get, sometimes we get questions when, just when a simple sign would, would help us.
Yes, most definitely. And I will reach out to the commission to let them know when the, like when I have that official date, so you guys know when and the expected, because I know you're representing the public and the public comes to you and say, "What's going on?" or "What's going", you have that information.
Right, that'd be great.
That sounds great. Okay, moving on to our next order of business, the Tenth Street stairs, which is, we were just talking a little bit about, I don't know if there's anything else. Tamara, you missed the beach, no worries, but maybe if you want to just share again what we're doing there for the public's benefit and-
Sure, most definitely. So in order for us to get this through the beach commission, or a beach, the coastal commission, and in order for us to streamline this and move this forward, we have to build it like-for-like. And the last stairs, my understanding, lasted quite a while, but weather, you know, really pounded it over time, but we're getting the emergency coastal development permit as a source to get this done, so we, as long as we're doing it like-for-like, we're going to replace it with recondi-, or re, you know, reconditioned redwood?
Reclaim.
Reclaim, thank you, reclaimed redwoods, and there are some, there's some wood in there that's already there that we can reuse as well. And we were able to get this under Chip's authority, which is fifty-nine ninety-nine ninety-nine, so fifty-nine thousand to get that upstairs done, but in order to do that, we have our own internal staff that's going to do the demo, Neil and I are going to do this together as well. And we're going to, you know, we do the demo and Carmel Cares did donate fifteen thousand also for that work as well. So that's why we're able to keep it down on the contract and able to move this forward, so I'm just going through some of the, as you know- guidelines we have to follow, so, I'm working on that one right now, and, and this was just this last year's budget, so we're using some funds that Chip had left over under him, that we can use these funds to get that, to get that done.
Great. And we expect that to be done sometime this summer?
I'm, I'm looking to have this worked on in July.
Okay.
I'm really, I was hoping to get it in June, but, process, right, it's process, and making sure we dot our i's and cross our t's, but I'm looking at July, I already talked to the contractor, he's like, you just let me know when, and I already talked to Rob, you know, and his team about when, in July, he just, when, and they'll shift their, their schedules around accordingly, but.
That's good to know, great.
But on top of that, I don't know if you guys saw the, around Devendorf Park, we've got the new fencing going around there, that should be done by Monday, we had a stop because of the, the farmer's market, but we did get some up, so that at least it protects the public from falling in, it looks, looks really, really nice, and we just got that done as well, and, and, again, I'll let you guys know when we start something, and if we need some outside help, you know, I always look forward to, I, I enjoy it too, I rolled up my sleeves this past week and just got out there and helped out, but it's, it's fun, I enjoy it.
That, that fence in Devendorf Park, was it, was that the first, like, public-private partnership project that we've had in the city?
I think so.
Where Public Works and Carmel Cares were together.
Carmel Cares, yes, yes, I do believe so.
Sideways side together.
What do they call that kind of agreement that we have, I can't remember, Chip was, Chip was telling me, because I had questions about that, making sure that we're not overstepping some boundaries, and it was some kind of agreement or, or, yeah, partnership on that specific project, where we supplied materials and he, they did the labor, but we helped out, so.
Right, for sure. It's not exactly the 10th Street Stairs, but just a question about, are there any other things that we're doing to prepare for the summer beach, right, for, because it's, where schools out, graduation, right, like, is there anything else that's happening in the department, or that's relevant to, like, being ready for the beach for the summer, or for Fourth of July, right, because we have, our next meeting is after the Fourth.
Oh, yeah, so, so, you know, I had some great talks and walks before we had our, looking at the 10th Avenue stairs there, and, you know, there's some low-hanging fruits that we're going to do, you know, just that, the steps and the rocks and the, the little metal piece that needs to be removed there, but also, I want to look at, I mean, there's that ramp, that sand ramp, something temporary now, do we need to push up some sand, how do we stabilize for now, so we can have something for the summer, while we have more people there? Do you have anything else? No?
It's kind of, not necessarily the beach, but just as access overall, we've, we've been getting a lot of complaints about the overgrowth of vegetation on Santa Lucia, so, we kept trying, I kept trying to schedule it, schedule it, but then, talking with my crew, he had a good point, that I didn't want to disrupt the school bus service, because we'll probably have to close the whole road down, or at least segments of it, so, now that school's out, TOPA's going to start that next week.
And then, last year, I seem to recall a report where, like, around Fourth of July, the city has increased trash service and other things related to the ocean parking, and, is that, do we have that again this year?
I don't know, I'll, I'll ask Rob and everybody, when, he's sick right now, so when they get, when he gets back, I know that we, I think we had additional trash cans on the beach, and we had the additional bathrooms, so that'll be, that'll be happening again.
I forgot who gave that report, but I do remember there was, like, a plan around the Fourth weekend related to.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mary too.
Trash and maintenance, and things around the scenic and the beach.
Do we put out portable bathrooms, is that when, have we put out portable bathrooms?
We will. Yeah, that, that, we do that every year, so that, that's coming.
Can I make a comment on that, just because I come from the South End, usually Santa Lucia, and it's not just the Fourth of July where the, where the trash is getting overflowing, and I can't tell you specifically, but it seems like every kind of Father's Day, Mother's Days, those just get overflowing, and it's, so, I don't know if it's extra trash for the entire summer, not just for those high weekends, bathrooms, I don't think are as much of a problem, but the trash down at the South End especially is, and I think even at Ocean, gets a little overflowing a lot of the weekends.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk to.
Good to know, I'll look at that.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak for the Carmel Cares pups, you know, the beach posse that does the beach, but I, I seem to recall that they also had an increase in some of their, around the Fourth holiday, I, I can't remember exactly, but, okay.
I would just assume, I mean, there's so many more people on the beach, there's going to be an increased level of trash and, and just debris, so, yeah, we'll keep an eye on that.
A little off-topic, but just, while we're on the beach, while we're on the beach, okay. Okay, any other comments or discussion? Would anybody like to make a public comment on the 10th Street Stairs project? Anybody online? Yvette?
No, that's House District.
Okay, thank you. So let's move to our last addenda item. It's hard to believe it's only three o'clock, and I will, I will pass it to you, Justin, for the, for the May, for the May 25 Foresters Report, you might be our lucky charm, Ken.
I know, Kelly, I think.
Where were you two years ago?
Our first meeting, when did we go till nine or nine-thirty at night?
We had a couple, the first couple.
Yeah, my, my first one went eight-thirty.
Yeah.
Well, he's got, he's next, so let's.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Justin. Harry.
All right, commissioners, this is the May 20, 25 Foresters Report. In terms of the Forest Master Plan, I, we kind of already went over it, that we have most of a draft, and we're going to start putting that together in the next week or so, so that we can formalize a date, and we'll send out notices to all the commissioners and all of the Steering Commission members, so we can get a time that would hopefully work for everybody. We're going to most likely have it here because of the turnout we had last time, we expected a huge turnout, and we didn't quite, I think we can, you know, facilitate everybody here, because I think that's, the beach meeting was in this room, correct? Yeah, so I think we can have something similar. And then, once that's, once that's ready to go, and decided upon in the meeting, we'll send, we can send that off to, to our consultant who's ready to do that. In terms of our contractors, so, I think it was brought up last meeting about the birds, we, we are having Denise Duffy survey every tree that we're, we're getting ready to work, and they're out there full-time, marching the streets and giving us back, I got, it's me.
Oh, is that you? Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that. They're surveying all the trees, and then they're reporting back to us and giving us tree numbers that we're able to send out to the tree companies. Community Tree Service is now done for the, for the year with their budget, but not, not only grinding 363 stumps this fiscal year between downtown district and everything south of Ocean, they also perform fairly intensive fuel management work in Upper Forest Hill Park, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to drive by there, I hope you all like it, it really was overgrown with blackberry, poison oak, and just shrubs, it's nice, you can see through it, it's got vertical clearance of the fuels, and, you know, if we keep at it, I also want to just make that part of the park a park again, it was kind of wasted, we can put some trails, I think that, that was a big, a big deal. And then, West Coast Arborist has been, they've been getting the trees from the surveyor, and they're, removed 24 trees last month, and now, we're about to issue them another task order, see what they can get done, more stumps north of Ocean, trying to knock out as many stumps as possible, just trying to put that in our back pocket, because of, really, the, the bird surveys were such a hampering thing, they're kind of out of left field, and you don't need to do that for stumps, you can just give it to them, and once they class, once they pass 811, they're ready to go. The, the, the city staff, we had our team building barbecue at Public Works Week and Backhoe Rodeo last month, that was fun, that was one of Ken's first events, and the crew removed 13 trees, planted three trees, and pruned 40 trees, we've really been up into pruning, and eventually, we want to get it to the point where Eric is just taking a street, every street throughout the city, and then just going in a grid and making sure everything's pruned and cleared, and we, we continue to pick up logs that PG&E has left, because it seems like a weekly occurrence. In terms of the permits, we took in 35 permits and issued 19 last month, issued 17 prunings, 19 removals, and, oh, sorry about that, 19 total removals with 22 trees required to For, for the year, for the, this is calendar year, even though we work fiscal years, we're pretty much on track with, we're way over on stumps, we're on track for prunings, and our removals are down, we just have really low planting, and that's kind of been a deficiency we've had, is, is, we've had some staffing issues, and we're trying to get the replanting back up to a point that's manageable, not just with the planting, but as we all know, it's the watering and the maintenance, so, we're trying to get a good blend, with this next new maintenance worker we get, we'll hopefully have enough to be able to have more, better staffing to provide the replanting, and then have town and country do the watering. And we've been pretty consistent with our, our tickets, responding to about the same amount, the same percentage of the tickets we receive online. Tom, could you come up for this, help me with this one? So, for the catch-up plan numbers, Tom has, Tom worked pretty tirelessly helping me put this together last month, or last week. So, the goal for the year, we.
It's higher up. It's above that.
There, it was 70 dead trees per year, 50 very poor trees, and 220-something stumps, so, so far this year, we've hit three, three, 300, over 300 stumps, and removed 190, or no, where's it?
It's the little chart right below, at the bottom of this page, you're on, yeah, right there.
Yeah. Removed 147 dead or very poor trees, instead of over 100, so 128 was the goal, and we removed 147, and removed 386 stumps. And this is, as I've tried, you know, shown before, we, we started thinking about it, it's not just the deferred maintenance, we're into a point of what, at what point is, are we out of deferred maintenance into just maintenance, because the trees that we're removing that are dead were fair or good before, so we're, we're trying, we're trying to knock that number down of the ones that were listed in the system, while at the same time, driving by a tree that died in a hot weekend, so it's like, that's a dead tree, but we're still removing a fair tree in the system, it's just the, the juggling act and the, the never-ending cycle of just trying to, of dealing with nature. Tom, do you have any other comments on?
No, I, I think you got the 30,000 foot view perfectly, we just included a lot of details, I'm not going to repeat everything that's in the staff report, just wanted to explain to folks how we came up with the plan that we had for, for our first year of what we had anticipated to be a three-year catch-up plan, right? And we had based those numbers off of, we had based year one's numbers off of the dead and very poor trees, and just took one-third of that total number, that's how we got to the 128 number, so it's just 191 dead trees that were surveyed two years ago, and the 130, whoops.
That's correct.
Yeah, and the 130 very poor trees, two years, a year ago, when we estimated these numbers, we actually didn't quite have the full inventory at that time, we estimated those numbers to be higher, we estimated there to be 234 dead trees and 150, 150 very poor trees, one-third of, of, of that combined total equaled 128, we had multiplied that by, you know, how much we thought it would be per tree, that's how we got to where we are, oh, and then, and then all the stumps, 221, was our goal, luckily, we've exceeded that so far. We actually anticipate for next year's trees, for their removal costs to be lower than this past year, so we, our goal was to do the 128 quote-unquote "worse" trees, well, oftentimes, those are the biggest, largest, and in terminology, the largest DBH, largest diameter trees, and we got, like, we got those.
We, yeah, we started out with our first task orders with dead, search by dead and size, so we're taking out the 48-inch dead trees, the 36-inch, the biggest ones that could cause the most damage, so as we get into the lower diameter classes, 12 to 24, 6 to 12, the, the cost should go, should decrease, and we can get more for our money, plus the, the crew ramping up to full capacity, being able to do more as well.
Yeah, and then we're, we're still rounding out the numbers, we're doing kind of like, not only a data cleanup in, at the end of June, it has to be the end of June, because we're still getting work done for this fiscal year, so, we don't quite have our, it's, it's tough to give exact goals, as you, there's some reasoning that we put in there in, in the report, it's a little bit tough with nature to give exact goals, I'm not going to go down the rabbit hole, that Melanie, actually, she, I like that she keeps us on her toes, I was at that tree today, asking questions about it, and, anyway, it was, it was marked as very poor, before, went by, couldn't get my, my digital inventory to load, so I came back to the yard, but I actually have a sticker on my desk right now, front, front row, saying, go back to that tree, so, we, we are reviewing them, we have to review every single tree before removal, so I went, went, went around to a bunch of sites today, Justin often does that kind of thing as well, and that was one of them, that I couldn't take action on it, and, which would be likely removing, it, it looks like it has a green canopy, but.
Yeah, our, our process is, to get ahead of this, and for time's sake, we, we gave, I gave a stack of tree removal signs to the biologist, so, once they say, oh, there's no nest, it's on our list, they just nailed it to us, nailed it to, it for us, so we, if, if, for some reason, we couldn't get out there, or it was really a crunch time, then the tree crew could just go through, so, we're going to go back and take that sign off, Melanie, so that tree's not going to be removed, and we're just trying to, you know, still look at every tree, but also, in the, with the time remaining in the fiscal year, to get the biologist to have as many eyes on as many trees that we have the ability to work them.
Yeah, but we're honing our goals for, for next fiscal year, we're almost to that, but we can't, we, we just can't quite do it, we couldn't have it ready for this meeting, just because, you know, it's crunch time at the end of the fiscal year, and we'll have a lot better data for next month, so, that's something that we'll, you know, bring and discuss then. I, I guess there was something also that we've, like, really put a lot of our, I remember you saying, we, we put a ton of our staff time, of Justin's tree crew time, into, into doing, into doing many of the removals, they've done, I can't remember the exact number that they've done, they've done a ton this fiscal year, that did mean that we need, that, you know, we couldn't do as many plantings, for example, or a couple of other, or, you know, several other important things. But, you know, we'll, we'll get our goal for this upcoming year, and I think, I think that's just about it for my end.
Yeah, I think. Questions? Comments?
I have, I have some questions. So, you said most, regarding the forest management plan, you said most of the draft is done, and that piqued my ears, most or all of it? Not all of it?
I shouldn't. Kelly, can you speak? Kelly, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I think on the, I think what, what Nikki has prepared will be, is shareable with the steering committee. And that, and, and you, and here, and this is going to be, this is a really important comment. This, this next version will be very different than what Davy proposed, which you've seen, which was a power, I'm sorry. This, this next public steering committee will be, what we look at will be very different than what the Davy Resource Group had provided the city. And so, the two-day public workshop that we had really was to focus on what were some of the deficiencies? And really to hear from our steering committee and the public, what priorities did people have for the Forest Master Plan for Carmel? With a desire to, we heard from many people, why didn't we just start with the old plan and kind of red-line it up to bring it current? As opposed to why did this just start anew in kind? So, I think that we'll have a working draft that will still require steering committee input and public input. And it will be the version after this next working session that will be ready to sort of post for formal public comment and to begin moving forward.
And for sequoian analysis.
So, it will, this will be the first time the steering committee will be looking at a different in-kind working draft of a plan for the city.
Right, so Nikki's made her entire set of, of changes that she needed to, and it's ready for review.
She, she's done.
That was kind of the question.
Yeah.
It wasn't like, oh, I still have, you know, two-thirds of the documents still to do and I'll give that to you.
No, Nikki, Nikki's turned her stuff over and she's done and
Awesome.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
And I think it's a working, you know, it's, the expectation we should all have is that it's a working draft that we'll have a roll-up our sleeves, you know, probably full day, um, steering committee workshop on, right?
Okay, great.
And I would say in terms of, is it, how close is it to being polished and done to go to council? It's still a ways away, right? This is the first time that it's going to be reviewed
Yeah, it's a complete draft.
Or document draft.
And, and the heavy, the heavy lifting, the heavy lifting was on the goals and policies. Because the other stuff was, you know, executive summaries, kind of some background, uh, the sci- the sci- the actual scientific data that Davy provided from the inventory. But really, the goals and policies are really the, the, all of the master plan. Like, like the origin, the two thousand and one is basically twenty pages of goals and policies and then a bunch of amendments.
Right, right, okay.
And I would also add, just in terms of that draft for expectations, is that the, it's the version after the next steering committee that would likely go to the initial sort of beginning sequoia input. So, it hasn't, nothing has gone for sequoia, the sequoia consultant, I should say. We haven't had something to share with a sequoia consultant yet.
The term draft is pretty, it carries a lot of weight in the sequoia.
Right.
And the other, the other that, um, factor that has not been incorporated at all, which I think will be an agenda item for the next steering committee meeting, is that council has since adopted the California Wildfire Protection Act, and that has implications also that aren't integrated or acknowledged in the current working draft. And so, the steering committee will, should take that up as a, as a topic, right? Because there, there's this, strategically, we want to make sure we have harmonization, right? So, that's
Right, okay.
But also wanted to include some of the ideas that are coming out about fire.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and work in coordination with the CWPP.
So, this is a tactical along those lines, I noticed on the website, because I'd actually found the, the Davy draft a couple of days ago, I was reading, and I sent Kelly, no, is this really the document?
Oh, oh.
And it's not, and my comment here is, um, so I think on the website, it says, I'm trying to find it here for us. We are currently beginning the sequoian initial study process now that we have a tangible administrative draft. Maybe we can update the website to reflect correctly what's going on on that.
Definitely.
And, and maybe even either deprecate or pull down the Davy draft because it's not relevant.
It's not the one that's part of the initial study.
Yeah, yeah, so is that something you take care of?
Yeah, well, yeah, me and Tom do that, we, we can edit the website.
That's probably, because Nikki just submitted this, what was it, two days ago or so? Yeah, so they'll probably be taking that down, I would imagine, once you're ready to put out the new one and, yeah.
Okay, okay. Can I keep going?
Sure.
I had a, I, I've always had a question on the, the, the bar graph on incoming requests via the website.
Okay.
I've always had this question, um, yeah, stop. So, the, the asterisk says, numbers only represent correspondences received via the website. Oh, and you have a spelling error, include, live calls has an L in it. Sorry, this is just one of my picadillos. Do we get a lot of incoming correspondence not through the website? And if so, can we somehow capture that too? Because I feel like it's important to get all of the correspondence numbers, if it's important.
We, we have estimated that in the past and we can just, uh, we can just adjust the numbers that we put up there and have a different asterisk spelled correctly. That includes that, but yes, I, I literally went around and, uh, to my colleagues' desks and clicked through all the calls that each of them got on a single day, and then did that later in the week. You just make the average, and we know that's how many incoming and outgoing calls and whatever else that we wrote in there. The drop-in visitors, uh, Yvette helped us out with that one, Yvette's often up in the front. So, yes, the answer is yes, we can include that.
This is just through, so when people either email the Forester email or leave a voicemail, that goes to Forester. So, that's what pops up in Freshdesk.
Right.
But like, if they call, if they call and we pick up the phone, it doesn't get logged in there.
Right.
Or, uh, yeah, like I said, people coming in, people, because that, that does happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, we can, we can calculate that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of wondering if it's possible, like, just make sure everything gets logged, right?
Yeah.
You, you understand?
No, I understand, I know where you're coming from.
Okay. I don't want to monopolize time, I have a couple of other questions, but I can certainly defer if others have
Break through a question if you just want to break up your questions. Justin, I just had a question on about the, um, let me back, pull up the exact numbers. You took the numbers, um, sort, sort of the total, split it into three, and you got a hundred and twenty-eight trees per, per year that you're trying to catch up on at this point. And I see that you took down one, one hundred and forty-seven. Were those one hundred and forty-seven earmarked from the initial batch? Because I know that, like you had mentioned, you have trees that go from fair to poor to, um, so when you, when you note the one forty-seven, were those from the initial trees that were earmarked that these need to go? Or is it a mix?
It's a mix.
It's a mix.
Because some of them, like I was saying, like, there's trees that are still good in the system when we take them down, but I drive by, or we get a complaint or a permit that the tree's dead. So, trees, you know, it's just stuff, it's, you know, the inventory happened a kind of long time ago now. And a lot has happened in between, between PG&E, storms, um, beetles. We had a pretty bad beetle year last year, I don't know if you noticed, a lot of pines going down. Just, you know, nature, so we so, it's, a lot are, especially the ones, when we give them to the contractors, we just pull them off the site. We pull them off the inventory, these are, you know, twenty, there's twenty dead trees. You have a biologist look at them, send them out. Uh, it's the ones that are done by the city, and that's where that matrix comes at the bottom, that I, you know, I drive by, I see it, I give a work order to the crew, and then when we go to log it, it's dead now, but what, what was it two years ago?
Right, you initially logged it. So, so to put it into context, how many trees would, would you say each year on average that you need to take down, period? If, if you were absolutely caught up on every past dead tree from this point on, what's the average number of trees? What's the, the attrition that we see each year?
Let's look at
Just so I can get a sense of
Look at the graph. So, this you know, maybe a little over a hundred, hundred, between a hundred, a hundred and fifty total.
I'm just trying to see if we're getting ahead.
If you go back to what we did this year, it was one forty-seven. So, you're saying, you would, you would expect every year a hundred and fifty trees to come down.
Well, I mean, just looking here, uh, you know, we removed ten, they removed ten trees la- last month. And of them, nine of them had changed, and, you know, one were dead. I mean, realistically, if, if we're doing everything right and the trees are happy and we're pruning them, we hopefully don't want to remove any of them. So, uh, but I, I, you can't say none, and, and then you have the storms, and it all depends on what the summer you have. Five to ten trees a month between contractors and the tree crew, I think is, um, safe, if not a little bit high. Hopefully that, you know, if we have ideal conditions, we don't have to remove nearly that many.
I think if you go back to that chart that you had of the, the summary table for the year, so it's, it is, this one right here, you just passed it, this one?
Yeah.
So, it was like, oh, no, one more, the, um, the three-year, this catch-up. So, I think when you looked at the, the dead and very poor trees initially, it was the numbers that, that, um, that Tom referenced, right? It was originally a hundred and ninety-one dead, a hundred and thirty poor. There were an additional, I mean, there were not, a hundred and ninety-one dead, a hundred and thirty very poor. There were also in the poor tree category, another a hundred and fifty to be removed. And then five hundred and seventy-eight to be pruned, right? So, this three twenty-one, this is capturing dead and very poor. But it's missing the poor trees that were, it's missing a hundred and fifty trees. So, if you include those, all the ones that should have been removed, that would have been, instead of three twenty-one, it would have been like four seventy.
But that, that wasn't our budget, so this, we're going off what we budgeted it off of. So, when we came up with these numbers to get the budget, it was just very poor and dead and stumps.
No, they weren't, the five point five million included the poor trees from twenty twenty-four. Anyhow, I guess the, the, I guess, the point I was trying to make was that we're, we have a known quantity of deferred tree maintenance that we know are trees that need to come down. We also then have the city tree inventory, and you can look at the age of those trees. So, for example, we have the knowledge about those trees. So, we could look and forecast
Right, how many
What do we expect over the next five or ten years to still fall into that category?
Right.
And we would probably anticipate that we would continue to have a fair number of trees. To your point, Justin, where you're saying it's five to ten a month, for example, because of the age, the eighty-plus, eighty-five-year-old age of many of the pines that we have in town, right?
And that's why we started with the biggest ones, to try to get the oldest, biggest ones.
But I think, I, I do think it's important, uh, so first
Yeah, so if, if we're, if we're using Treekeeper, also, we should have a sense of which, which of these trees were, were marked in, in, in these categories. So, we, you, you might know that out of the one forty-seven, that a hundred and two were from that, that group. And that forty-five, Tom, I don't know if you have something to say, were trees that through, throughout the last couple of years have since died that were taken down. That's sort of what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, um, actually, the, uh, would you mind, Justin, just scrolling down to the next? Yeah, so we're, this goes back to your prior question. Those numbers are actually for, they're, they're the exact same trees. So, we actually did remove a hundred and forty-seven out of
Of those earmarked.
This, yeah, that were already of the exact same very poor trees.
Okay.
Removed thirty-three, and of the exact same dead trees, removed a hundred and fourteen. So, that one forty-seven is from, is still from there. And actually, okay, so the last row is the amount removed. But here's where, here's where, here's where, like, uh, here's why it takes a lot of time and it's complicated for us. The actual amount, let's go with easy numbers, the excellent, uh, column, okay? There's much more than a hundred and thirty-four excellent trees. Why is that not listed on there? Because we need to talk about, we need to keep the same numbers. Like, we're telling you how many of the original list that was on there.
Okay, that's
Exactly, that's exactly the same, so we're talking about the same data.
Okay.
We've planted a couple more trees, Friends of Carmel Forest has been doing a great job using a lot of our vacant sites and planting. So, we, and most of those new trees are in excellent condition. So, we actually have more trees than that, but we're trying to talk about the same numbers over time. And I used to include an asterisk over that, uh, that, that discussed that, but over time, we've kind of just dropped that one. But I, but that list, that chart right there
So, that makes sense of this graph, because you can see that you went from the one thirty-six, I'll just use the first line in the excellent, one thirty-six, one thirty-six, and one, one thirty-four, one thirty-four. So, there's a difference of two. And if you look at all them, at the very poor, you'd begun with one thirty-three, then it went to one twenty-five, stayed at one twenty-five the next month, then the following, it went to one hundred. So, a total of thirty-three were removed.
Correct.
That makes sense of this graph. Okay, so you are working off of the trees that you've already identified.
Yeah, and we've actually done a ton
On top of that.
Of the trees in the poor cate- well, you can see we've done a lot of work in many categories. We've actually done a ton of the work in the poor category, but something interesting that came up in the past several weeks where we're really trying to, you know, true this up, is Justin's like, we need to distinguish between deferred, truly deferred maintenance and maintenance.
Right, that's fixed, right.
And what we're finding is that when we go up to these trees that were, that were marked as poor,
Right.
We go up and they have a completely full canopy, and Justin's like, it may have been poor on that one day that it was assessed two and a half years ago. It very well may have been in poor condition. Looks pretty darn good right now.
Right.
So, um, but we've, I mean, we've pruned, you, in Ju- Justin's Foresters report, you can see, we've pruned a ton of trees. Many of those pruned were actually in the poor category, but they just weren't removed. So, the twenty-two trees that were removed in the poor category, those were just those removed. We've actually done a ton of the pruning of those trees in the, in that, in that original category, so
Well, of the seven fifty-four trees, only a hundred and fifty were tagged for removal last, in summer of twenty-four.
Yeah, and we've removed twenty-two out of those a hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I guess we haven't, you haven't, we, we haven't yet acknowledged the work you did to put this report together today. And I guess before we get into nitty-gritty on it, I would just like to really say thank you for the effort
Yeah, thank you.
To put this together, because I think, I know how much work it takes. And I think that it's really important for, for us and to be accountable to when we say, oh, we've got a three-year catch-up plan. That we know where we are, and did we feel like, did we make the, the first year's progress? Like, how did we do? So, I hope that we're able to integrate this sort of into our monthly tracking in a more robust manner. But I really appreciate this, because I think we, this is something we've been talking about, asking for.
This is a celebration.
And I know how much work, I know how much work it took to do this, so I really, I really want to acknowledge that. I think it would be helpful to, um, to somehow find a way to make sure that you're getting credit for the pruning, because there is a lot of pruning. And also, Justin, you've talked a lot about, you know, trees are living and they change condition. And so, for, in, in the excellent category, we have more because of plantings, et cetera. And so, I think this is where, you know, we're fortunate that one of our commissioners, Neil, has like extensive experience in data management and software systems, and I think, and he could really help us in Treekeeper so that we could get a picture of this plus the other, the other pieces that are changing and the new things that are happening. It'd be really great for us to be able to tap into that so that we can show that.
Yeah, no, thank you, I remember that discussion when y'all had, you know, come in, we're, and we're discussing that with Justin, and it's perfect, perfect time for me to thank you for the, the compliment. I want to directly pass it along, because at the time that you guys got together, I remember, you know, I was, I was there for most of the conversation, overhearing most of it.
Yeah.
And I remember saying, we just don't have time to put it in the system, we don't have time to put it in. But a testament to, a testament, all of that thanks is a testament to Justin. He has all of the notes of every single day that we worked on it, piles and piles of papers, all meticulously tracked, tracked. We didn't have it in Treekeeper, so it was really hard to pull numbers, and we don't want to, we don't want to display numbers that are inaccurate. So, then, you know, we don't want to bring it to you, you know, to, to you all, month after month. But, um, but no, that's a, that's a testament to, it really just took the time to put it into Treekeeper. All the data was there. And then the last thing I'll say about that is, the best example ever that I've come across for how time-consuming it is, is we sent one of our, what's that?
Pass the map around.
Oh, sure. We sent five hundred, uh, over five hundred stump locations south of Ocean to one of our tree contractors. Um, we sent five hundred, uh, over five hundred stump locations south of Ocean to one of our tree contractors, and, um, they went through and and removed everyone that, you know, was accessible, that was possible, that needed to be removed, that didn't have utilities, and so on and so forth. But we need to go and update over five hundred data points, and we haven't done that yet. The numbers for stump is is just an easy subtraction that we were able to do. So that's the only number that's not from Treekeeper, that's from us being able to clearly know from, I don't know if I need to pass this along, but anyway, we literally printed out maps, and these guys were like, we were on it too, we numbered every one of them, and then they went by and told us everything, so this is going to take like hours and hours and hours to put in. But my point is, um, we do have the information, um, this is accurate and up to date. I think we're really kicking butt, we want to celebrate that, we hope you want to celebrate that as well. And I think you'll be pleased with our data moving forward.
Thank you, thank you both, thank, thank you, Tom and Justin, for doing this and for explaining it. Now it makes sense what we're looking at here, so thank you so much. Um, good work, I'm excited, thank you, thank you both.
And Tom, I have one question on the stumps, I want to go back to that, because when we, you said that we did identify the eight eighty-six, but you're saying there are only six hundred and sixty-four upon
Oh.
that we could actually address, the others were going to have to sit there. The other thing that we put in the report last summer was that we anticipated there were going to be, across three years, an additional four hundred and seventy-one stumps associated with the tree removals. And so for all of the deferred maintenance tree removals, are those stump removals getting counted in the data you have? Are they not counted, or are they just tied to the tree removal? Because that's a big chunk of of work that we need to make sure is captured.
It's in the contractor, it's in the task order, that when they remove it, they grind it too. So we're not going back and counting it as a stump per se, because it's, it goes from tree to planting space.
Okay, so that, so so the, um, in other words, when a tree comes out now, you're saying it goes all the way through the stump? And so we're not, they're not leaving a stump that you have to go back in?
No.
So those four seventy-one are not really, um, we don't have to think about those. The four seventy-one were the trees, that was the stumps associated with the trees coming down. You're saying we don't need to consider those now?
Uh, for financial purposes, or for data?
Just for data.
For showing the data?
For data.
Um, we're not showing them in this chart that's currently on the screen, because we're only comparing the six hundred and sixty-four from two and a half years ago, so the newer ones are not going to be counted, and they're not going to be, sorry, they're not going to be reflected in this chart. We do have the numbers, like, we do keep track of that, because sometimes when they remove trees, they can't remove the stump, so we need to mark that as a new stump too. So we do have all this information, but at, you know, at a certain point, you'd be able to confess to this, or, uh, you know, confirm this more than anybody, is that a certain point, like, how much data can you per, can you present? There needs to be, you know, this, we we do want to be transparent and show what we're doing, but at a certain part, we could give you like sixty-three graphs on this report, so we're trying to find a balance of what is, uh, wanted and what, you know, to show the work we've done, but we just, at some point, we need to, you know, just try to make a decision and call it and say we, yeah.
But a lot of these reports, if the data's input and tagged correctly, it's very easy to pull the reports out of Treekeeper, right? I know this is, yeah, so the, but do you need, would you, like, with all of the manual entry, right? Like, that just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like that's a good use of your time or Justin's time. Like, is there, is this something you can get, like, a a summer intern, a part-time person, a Carmel cares volunteer? I'm just thinking that that it doesn't seem like data entry is that hard, but it could take a lot of your time, right?
You're you're spot on, this conversation's actually come up a number of times since I had started here. I don't know if it's been discussed before, there are a couple of, um, union matters to address regarding positions that are currently unfilled, funded but unfilled, and part of that job description is data entry. So the fact that a volunteer would then be taking the, would be, an unpaid volunteer would be taking the position of a funded yet unfilled union position is a problem. So that's what that, um, that's just one of the things that had come up, that, you know, that's public, that's public information, that's public knowledge.
So maybe we need to just remove that position, if it's still not, if it
We're going to fill, I don't, definitely, one thing I don't want to ever do is remove positions, when we're very shorthanded. You know, there's a lot of work and and from public work, so, you know, how can we leverage the position? But just go and certainly fill them, and I'm already working with HR since I got here about positions, getting these filled. I got a few other ones I got to fill, and I'm also looking at what I'm going to do about maybe adding a position of the future. Uh, but one of the things, uh, the team and I, we've been talking about since I got here, you know, how do we make our our life easier? How do we get that data entry? You know, it's great, you got a piece of paper, but is there some kind of electronic way? I mean, we don't have the best network in this area, you know, I don't think, uh, personally, but, um, I know, right? It's like, uh, but how do we, how do we get information into the system electronically quicker and real time? And then it's easy report, so, you know, if they're out there, how do we give our contractors access to enter that information? Other cities have done this, uh, but of course, they have a lot of money and a lot of budget, you know? San Francisco, thirteen billion-dollar city budget, you're talking two different, uh, organizations, but what can we do? And and what are some of the solutions? So we're, we're really diving into that, but definitely agree with you, it's like, how do we get that information real time?
And I wasn't trying to apply to get rid of staff, it's just
No, no.
we had so many open positions that have just gone, that continue to just go unfilled and unfilled. And if that's creating, like, if we're getting behind on things because of that, then is it practical matter until it's filled? Is there a way to get a waiver or something to have some, because we certainly have, I bet there's, if we said we needed help, I I bet we could find help pretty quickly, right? So, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about the, and again, my head's spinning a little bit on this data, so. And maybe you guys have talked about it at past meetings, but we did this survey, what, two years ago? The Davey Survey?
Inventory?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I'm, I just want to make sure I'm hearing is that for the past two years, because of a lot of issues, and by the way, uh, let me just start by saying, really good job with the stumps. Talk about things you notice, so I would agree with that, but, um, it's gone two years of data kind of not getting updated anywhere, right? Generally, so what we think are good, fair for trees, that's still kind of in the system that way.
Yes.
So
And that's the hard part, is there's, you know, eleven, twelve thousand trees and manually
And I I think this is what you're saying, is, as as every day goes by, that survey gets less and less valid.
There you go.
Earthquake?
I'd you.
What was that? Earthquake?
Yeah.
He's just worrying us, we need to go in.
So
You touched a nerve there.
So I think that's just my question, kind of along what Kelly is saying, is what's then the the plan? Or do we need to get to that point of saying, because it sounds like we know what the the end result would be is you scan a tree and it gets into the system, the data's automatically updated, but we're now two years behind. Do we have the data somewhere that if someone sat down and updated it? Because otherwise, we're just going to have to do another inventory.
Well, I mean, that's kind of, it's, it's very, uh, similar to how P G E has their trees. I don't know if you've ever seen that, they they have their whole G I S system, all their miles and miles of lines, and each tree is a location, similar to this, and that's what they do. Every year, they had, they pay their millions and millions of dollars to the contractors to assess every single tree, every single year, because that is a direct risk mitigation to their facilities. You know, ours, we have that risk, but it's not as, or we don't have, we weren't given the the edict to spend that much money, because that that would be, I mean, the inventory itself was, it was very expensive, and to do that every year would be a lot, just to have eyes on every tree. But I think in the, in the priorities, there is something in the new pri- priorities for the new plan to, at minimum, have it, the trees assessed every four years. Because that is how, before we had the Tree Keeper, the the original, uh, system was, they would bring in interns, it's like kids from Carmel High, and they would survey one quarter of the city every year. So every four years, you would have a complete inventory. But now that we have the points, we could look, go back and reassess conditions every four years. Maybe budget it to rehire Davey or
A quarter every year.
But Justin, you also said when the two, but but to be fair, with, Treekeeper is, has these trees in them now?
Yeah.
And so you've said that when, like, if a contractor's out on a work order, it's just like the tree, the example here that that, um, Melanie was saying, are you sure you want to cut it down, and Tom's taking a look, and it's not as poor as people thought, et cetera? You can update Treekeeper, it's, you can, in real time, it can be updated. So as the crews are working, ideally, I'm I'm with you, Ken, right? If the contractors have the ability in real time, when they work on a tree, to input what they've done in the status,
Yeah, of the work.
then it would be cur, it would presumably be current, and the need, and the need to do sort of the full-on canvassing.
But that's still, even these numbers that we're doing here, or the numbers that were worked, is just a, you know, a percentage point of the whole canopy, like, the whole twelve thousand trees. And that's kind of what the point is to, in going to, to Commissioner Ro, Harry, sorry, um, is to have a whole picture of what every tree looks like, and, um, if we're only doing, you know, we doing stuff that we work is good, and either it goes away, it becomes a stump, or it becomes a, uh, a a planting space, um, it, it's really hard to looking at, especially after looking at those poor trees, it's really hard to take a tree that's poor, just in practice, to prune it back up to fair. Pretty much, once something becomes poor,
Yeah.
just the the resources it takes is easier just to remove it. So we're just kind of more of a monitor, and then if we can go back, I mean, every four years, what is not a lot, but to get something a little bit more, uh, just closer, because, you know, as you drive around, you see trees that are just, even a year ago, changing, and not even the the big stuff, the small stuff. And, um, you know, I don't recall what twenty twenty-three looked like, it was a bi- busy year for me and for all of us. Um, it could have been micro stuff, like, the tree had moths, so it didn't have any leaves, so they said it was poor, then you come back and it's full and beautiful.
Right.
And oaks can go into dormancy sometimes, so it's just, I don't know if there's a perfect answer to keep it always updated, because there's just so many, um, points in the system, and it just takes time. Time and someone that's qualified to to know what a tree looks like, to see a defect, to see if it truly is poor, or, um, they could pass a tree that says, this tree's excellent, but it could have a hole in it or something.
How many trees, on average, do you touch per month in the city, across the city sta, city tree crews and all three contractors? How many trees get touched on a monthly basis?
Including printing?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I would say a month, around eighty to a hundred.
So, so you're touching, on average, ten percent of the total inventory in the city per year-ish?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a small, it's a fraction
Yeah.
of the total forest, in other words, right?
Yeah.
So the, that four years that is in the master plan, remember when we had the conversations about that? That four-year sort of formal inventory then feels important, which I think you're saying is important, but it 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 actually becomes quite important, because the percentage trees of the total forest that you're touching on an annual basis
And now, and then
is pretty small.
And, yeah, and remember that we talked about kind of the grid pruning, breaking it out into five grids?
Yeah.
Um, what we're having the contractors do is these big hairy removals, grinding stumps. If they were just pruning, they would be able to do way more, like how our crews do a a lot of, um, clearance and and, you know, raising them up, thinning them out. Eric's really, when he does a street, he, I'll give him a tree, and if it's, uh, not a huge, big tree, they're going to hit that one, then they're going to, he's going to look around, I need to do that one, I do that one, I do that one, and then at the end of the, at the end of the the week, he goes and tells me all the things he did.
That, but that will become increasing, presumably, that will become easier as we're caught up on the deferred maintenance
Oh, yeah.
of this three-year, as we get to, as we clear the backlog of deferred maintenance.
Yeah, because that's the goal, you want to get to that.
Right, that that will be easier, right? But you'll, is this still as a percent of the total forest? And these are just the city trees, mind you, right, that you're you're touching, so that inventory, but it would be useful even if the trees that are being touched, we had some way to real-time update the Treekeeper, and I'll leave that, I'll defer that to, like, Neil, I think you've got some good ideas on that, but that would be really
Yeah.
valuable, right? We certainly have technologies that exist to help.
I I'm listening to this, I'm just kind of wondering if the discussion really is about what information we're using Treekeeper for. I I I agree that we shouldn't just be updating information for information's sake, if it's not useful, right? But I think that if we're inputting information, it's got to be complete, right? Whatever that is. And so it sounds like maybe that's an interesting discussion point to have. You know, what information do we need to be tracking and putting into Treekeeper? And I know that's a complicated subject.
That's good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I just ask another question, because you guys have probably been exposed to it than I haven't? So we we've talked about the the state of the tree and the pruning. It, is part of why you call something very poor, poor, is there some kind of risk assessment that goes along with a tree?
Not, there is, but not for that. This is, these were all done as a, um,
I guess I mean in general, not just for the deferred maintenance, but my question is, you could have a dead tree that has very little risk in terms of knocking down power poles or disrupting a road. You could have a good tree that has a really high risk of doing some, uh, causing some damage. Is is that just kind of as you see it happening, or is it built into why you call something very poor, or?
Well, the 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 condition is just the can, the health.
Right.
So that, and that was from the inventory.
Right.
So they didn't look in depth that, it might have been, uh, there's one that I've looked at that was very poor. There was, I could put my hand all the way through the tree, it was like leaning against the fence, and, you know, that
High priority of risk, right.
it was green, but it was falling apart. Um, yeah, we did, the risk assessment is separate from
Right. Does that happen, or is it just?
On a case-by-case.
I just, you see it, or?
Yes, that that'd be, that's a lot of trees.
Okay, just so I know when we're talking, that there's really not a lot about risk, except as something's very obvious.
Yeah.
Good.
And the follow-on that I have on this, and I know I've asked this before, do we have definitions for the quality of the tree? You know, good, fair, poor? And I ask this because if we're using these definitions, um, to evaluate the tree, to communicate to a, uh, property owner, for example, I think we need to have definitions written down, so that we can go and say, this is what we mean by this.
This is what poor is, yeah.
Exactly, so is that, do we have that written down somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, they they, it should be, because when they provided these conditions, it's, I, I think it's in the initial assessment, and it declares what those are. I mean, normally, you don't go as many categories, like, I've, I was always done just fair, poor, dead, you know? Because excellent, you know, to have excellent and good is a little bit excessive, just as, you know, living things, once you're born, you start dying, and it's, um, these, sorry.
You're sitting on your head.
But the trees, you know.
So it's sapling or stump?
Yes. To have an excellent tree is really hard, even to have a good tree is, in my, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, you raise a great point, and so, you know, going back to what I said about, you know, let's make sure we've got the right information. If we only need a certain set of categories, if you will, then let's use those, but, you know, the fear is always, too much information is not necessarily a good thing. And and I think, like, if you do a report that says, oh, this tree is in poor health or normal health, or whatever,
Why, why is it?
why is that the case, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, terminology's always good, definitions are good. Is it on the website, for example? Do we have something definitive that we can point to that's consistent? That's kind of the question.
Well, and we, we do rate trees, you do rate them. So like, when we're looking, I mean, you you'll rate a tree, when we're looking at at taking trees down, you've you've given us those forms that they mark down the the various different, so you 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 do rate them.
Yeah, there's there's several different
Yeah.
versions, um, and then we have the in-house one for the city, rating the significant trees, and those are different points. That's for mostly construction, but it's kind of health, one through three. And I know there is a, an industry one for these very, these poor, very poor dead, so I I can pull that language and send it over to you.
Yeah.
Perhaps looking at harm, I mean, it Perhaps looking at harm, I mean, it might be helpful to your point, Neil, like to harmonize. To the extent we can harmonize and standardize within Treekeeper, that, the reporting would be really helpful.
Yeah, or, I mean, I would even say, and this can certainly be up for discussion, I would love to see these definitions on the website. You know, this is how we rate trees, you know, we have quality of the tree, we have risk, you know, and this is how we use this information. And, you know, maybe this is a discussion, you know, maybe you want to give this a thought, but I think this would be a great kind of, let's get the terminology down, standardized, so there's no, you know, there's no confusion. You know, if we have this down, it's gonna be a lot easier to have discussions on this stuff. That's kind of where I'm going.
Makes sense, yeah.
And Harry, to your, the question you asked about risk that was interesting, when we came, when the inventory was first done and the deferred maintenance plan was put in, that three-year catch-up plan was put in place, I remember asking Justin once, you know, when we had the winter storms two years ago, it doesn't necessarily follow that it's the dead trees that are correlating with the highest risk and damage. In fact, it was healthier trees that were causing more damage, because they had more robust canopies that if the wind caught the right way, that were hitting the cars or the houses or going through the roofs, right? So it wasn't, it didn't necessarily correlate that the health of the tree.
Yeah.
Right? And so that was one where I think, and I think we see more of the, um, we've actually seen, um, more, uh, an increased number of residents coming to the commission requesting a tree be removed that is healthy for safety reasons, because it's right within, you could touch the tree from the house and concerns that it's gonna take the house or the roof or something.
Yeah, okay. I think that was my thought is.
I think we're also, I think we're on the edge with fire safety and with insurance and with requirements. I think we're about to enter a whole new world with our forests. And what, what we can impose, what is imposed on us. So I, I, I would imagine in the coming months, we're going to be going through a lot of changes about what is acceptable, what is not acceptable. With, with regard to pruning, how, how close that trees and shrubs are to our homes. And there's gonna be a lot of change, and I, we're, we're in the midst of doing the, the forest management plan. I'm sure that will be incorporated, so. I think we're probably in a position now where it's almost buckle up, because there's going to be a lot happening in the coming months.
Good point.
So.
Any other comments? Thank you. This is, I, I think the light agenda allowed us to have a longer conversation here that was helpful. And again, thank you, Tom and Justin, for the work to pull this together. As a year-end, it's really, it's helpful to see, and it's really exciting that about a third of the progress, it sounds like, was made and, um, you know, and you got incremental budget last year to achieve that. So that's really, um, an achievement. I, I hope that you and all your team and the contractors are all proud of. That's outstanding. Yeah. Okay, our last topic is future agenda items. And I think we had one, um, that Justin is committed to, to putting on the July agenda.
Yeah, the, uh.
Cause that's still work, the fines.
Fines, and just kind of, uh, I've been talking with the planners about taking, even going beyond that, even taking a step back to, uh, trees and development as a whole. And I, I've got a bunch of ideas, and we don't have to do that next month. I can start bringing some, some stuff about, um, accountability on the homeowners, on the contractors, uh, private arborists, you know, making plans and monitoring. It just seems like, uh, I've noticed a lot of trees either dying or being removed or wanting to be removed in the, the building phase, when it's kind of like, well, you were supposed to protect it, what's happening? Uh, just kind of getting back to what the priorities of the city are, but then again, it changes too with fire and everything. Um, and really, though, all of our kind of core foundations of the city in terms of development were built around six hundred-foot single-wall cabins, not, not twenty-two-hundred square foot, three-story, two-story house with basements.
With an A D U.
It, it's very, the, you know,
Yeah.
it's changed a lot.
Yeah.
As you saw last night with how advanced the planning has gone in terms of building materials and everything, so.
I think if we could start with your presentation.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
So on the fines, that would be, that would be a really practical,
I think so.
like proactive step that we could take.
And, and part of that can build in, it, it's, it can be built in to, like I was saying, how Saratoga does, uh, bonds. Make, make somebody post a bond and, and have them val, trees evaluated or something like that. And we can, I'll bring a bunch of examples and we can kind of chew on that next month.
Right. Also, let's make sure we bring in the cost for, you know, if someone has a dead tree on their property, what does it cost today? Cause I think we have had other jurisdictions around us waive those fees, and I think that was something we wanted to look at specifically. Also, just in the spirit of deferred maintenance, that was one. The other topic, I don't know if we can do this next month or not, but I do think we did have, um, we received an email from the, from Nancy Toomey at the Carmel Residents Association regarding the implications of the California Wild for, the C W P P.
The fire stuff, yeah.
And, um, it's, at a ci, city council level, this, the, the new maps were adopted. It was mandated by the state that all jurisdictions do that. And so, um, Mayor Burns and Councilman Booter are in a small work group to sort of evaluate what are the implications of that. And so I sat in on a couple of meetings and, um, so did Michael LaPage from planning. But the Monterey County Chief of Police came and presented and said that they were doing inspections this summer of all, all the, across the entire city of Carmel and, you know, leaving an inspection if they didn't, weren't able to talk to a property owner. But I do think that he had some really helpful perspective on what are they looking at now? What are the important areas of compliance within the next three years? This is, this is bigger than Forest and Beach, like the city's gonna have to take on a lot. But I do think if, if we have our, uh, all of our parcels being inspected this summer across the next couple of months by intern, summer interns with Monterey Fire, that if we could ask them to come to the July meeting and maybe just share, like, what they're doing, what, what are the, you know, the, um, what happens to explain what happens during the inspection, you know, one of the things he said, I think that was really important was, you know, they're, the new C W P P is not requiring people to like cut down every tree on their property. And so he said, you know, the conversations they were having right now were being extremely well-received, because people were like, you know, their worst fears weren't being realized as these inspections were happening. However, there are certain things that require compliance in the next three years that will change some things, right?
Especially with the new maps, like some people's zones are changing.
Related to fences, and that's really planning and not us. I'm just thinking more about the trees, right?
Let me, I'll, I'll try.
But let's see if they, let's see if someone could come, because I think it would be useful.
Let, let me call, let me see if I can get, reach out to Jen Valdez, the fire inspector. She heads up that whole division. So let me see if I can get ahold of her. Um, I, I would like her to speak on it, cause she's the person dispatching and in charge of all those. So if not July, let's see, at least do it in August.
Right. The only reason I say July is if it's happening now and through the summer, it would be good to have it.
Fire season.
Yeah, then to just share what they're doing. And they have a pamphlet, and it's really, I think it's as simple as sharing the pamphlet and how they do an inspection, and then we'll have it and if people want to come.
Cause I, I went to one that passed, and even I was kind of like, oh, that's, okay, cool. Like, it's not as, it's not, you know, bare earth like everyone is thinking.
Exactly.
Do you know if this is being announced in the pine cone, or how we're making our citizens aware that people are, that these people are going to be coming to your property and doing an assessment? Not that this is your job, but are you just aware of?
I don't know if, if it's noticed. I just, they, they send out the mailers. I, I'm pretty sure most of them have got one of the mailers by now, right?
Yeah, the mailers all went out. They said, I think it was in
In May.
May, I'm pretty sure.
Did you receive a mailer?
Yes, we did.
I haven't seen them.
I got the Monterey Fire Mailer.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
The Monterey Fire Mailer, yeah.
Did it say that someone was going to be coming by your home, doing an assessment?
Yeah, it's, this is what, this is what you need to do.
Notify us when you're ready.
Notify when you're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think they're operating, I think they have a couple of interns that are operating again on like a grid basis or something.
And I, and I have, we've gotten a lot of calls of people freaking out, so.
I, I just think having, it's just as a, I mean, it's, it's kind of like the beach there, right? Like, if it's happening in our city and it relates to properties being inspected for trees and understory, then let's, okay. And then we have, we probably should have included in announcements, but we have, um, per our bylaws, our next, at our next meeting, we'll do the
Elections.
elections for chair and vice-chair again for this, this coming fiscal year. I think, any have a final comment or anybody have an agenda item?
Can I just ask a question? Can I just ask a question, Sarah?
I think.
These inspections, um,
Melanie.
Melanie, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you after that. Right, I'll talk to you after.
Oh, okay. Oh, good, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, I think we're, we're, we're concluded with that part of the meeting for right now. Sorry, Melanie. The, um, so anybody else, no last comments on future agenda? Okay, with that, I think we are adjourned.
Thank you.